Good evening. My name is Rebecca Bench. I'm the Chair of the Hatfield School Committee. It is Wednesday, March 9th, 2022, and I am calling this meeting of the school committee to order. First on our agenda, we have public comment. So any people wishing to make public comment may do so for a short period of no longer than three minutes per person. Seeing as we do not have any public comment here at the town hall, if anyone joining us via Google Meet would like to make a comment, please put your name into the chat and we will call on you in order. And I don't see anybody who's on the phone, so that's good.
Pam Novak?
Yep. All right. Pam Novak?
Hi there.
Hi there.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, great. I just wanted to encourage you to lift the mask mandate to allow students to make their own choice about whether or not they wear masks in school, following the Board of Health decisions and many of the other communities in Massachusetts that have already done so. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give it another minute for any other, or another couple of seconds for any other public comment. Just want to let those people get in. Jean, did you want to make a public comment?
Jean, your microphone's off.
Looks like she raised her hand.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I just want to thank everybody for the last couple of years, but especially the last year with helping everyone in the school system figure out how to navigate next steps. It's been important to have these extra few weeks to figure out the details and to sort through all of the information, the DESI information, the DPH information, the CSE information. There's been a ton out there, as you all know, in trying to figure out next best steps for everyone in the school. And I ask that the school committee, no matter your decision, that you continue to support health and safety efforts. I think we're all united, and we all believe in that, no matter our opinions, that you continue to support health and safety efforts as we move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jean. All right. I don't see any other folks who want to make a public comment at this time, so, Mr. Wood, we can close the chat and we will proceed with the meeting. Thank you. All right. The first item of our informational reports section of the agenda is the student representative, so we will turn it over to Hadley Zinell.
Awesome. So just kicking it off, next week, we have March Madness. It runs from the 14th to the 25th. It includes fun dress-up days, door wars, which is where the teams get together and decorate the teacher's door. And then there's a voting session, and we vote on the best one. And there's a coin and leprechaun hunt every day, where if a student finds one, like say they find it in the commons, they can bring it to their advisor, and their team will get points. And then we're also doing penny wars, which the profit of that will go to Really for Life, which will be attending the Walk-a-thon thing in June. And then at the end, we'll have a pep rally on the 25th. It's kind of like Spirit Week during homecoming, and there'll be like PJ Day and stuff like that. And then on like the class fundraiser side, the class of 2024 has a can and bottle drive coming up on April 23rd, so make sure you save your cans for that. And then the class of 2026 is selling butter braids and cookie dough, so find one of them if you're interested in buying one. I don't know the date that they're running it through, but yeah, try to track someone from that grade down. And then I know the class of 2023 will be having a car wash as soon as possible, as soon as, you know.
Not tonight?
Tomorrow.
Sometime in the spring.
Tomorrow will be 50.
Yeah, and so that's it.
Awesome. Hadley, thank you so much for being here and giving us that report. Do committee members have any questions for Hadley?
I do.
Yeah.
Do you want to give us a brief synopsis of your Panama trip?
Oh my gosh, it was so amazing. We're doing a presentation on it next month.
Okay, good.
Where you'll see like pictures and stuff, but it was amazing and a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that I'm so, and I'm sure I'll be one of the people speaking on that little presentation, so, yeah.
Glad everything went well.
I know, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Hadley. We will turn it to Mr. Wood.
All right, welcome, everybody. Starting off with facilities, we do have an official quote now for the patch on the elementary roof on the gym and cafeteria. We're going to work with the company to schedule as soon as the weather allows us to, probably late March, so we hope to get that done. Our freezer has been installed at the high school, middle school, high school, and we're very appreciative of the Warren article that supported that. It did come a little bit above that amount based because of some electricity, electrical work that had to be done that couldn't be seen based on the old one being in place. And we'll work with the town and obviously our own budget to make that payment and make that difference. There is still some electrical work that needs to be done, so we do have some outstanding. It's included in that price, but it's outstanding. It just hasn't been completed, so we don't have to pay for a while until they actually do it. So that's always a good thing. Just to keep you up to date, we did have a resignation of our math interventionist at Hatfield Elementary School. We have that advertised. We thought we had a replacement for a para in our STAR program. However, it turns out that that's not the case, so we're still looking for paras at both schools, but we'll continue to do that. I do want to just publicly thank our para professionals at both schools, really. They do an amazing job, not only in the job they've been hired for, but they are also amazingly resilient and flexible to fill in those places where we need help, especially as substitutes for other paras and teachers who have other responsibilities or are just out that day. And they're just amazing to do that, so very much a shout-out to them as well. We were fortunate. Dr. Driscoll did hire a French teacher to be our substitute there, which really helps there for lots of reasons, so we're very appreciative of that. And started yesterday, so it looks like it's going in the right direction. And most importantly, Mrs. Petra is here, and she starts on Monday. See, I was foreshadowing in there. I didn't really know that that would be possible, but I have always optimistic. So she'll be starting on Monday, and so I'll shadow with her for a couple of days. Hopefully, we can get Dr. Driscoll back, and he can shadow with her for a little bit as well. But I think she's raringly ready to go. Good. So the policy is in your packet, so I won't talk about that. That's later on in the agenda. We are looking, I am looking to set up our district improvement committee for an evening presentation and workshop to update our academy, update our goals. And we'll do that hopefully in the next couple of weeks so that we can make sure that that plan is done before June. And other events, I had a session with Joe Comerford, our representative, a very insightful woman. I hadn't met her yet, talked through email a few times. So it was very positive. She's got her button, hands on the button of the ideas and needs of the rural areas and was very complimentary of work that the Rural Aid Committee and Commission is doing. So I'm very hopeful that in the coming weeks and months, there might be some little additions to either the Student Opportunity Act, which would help us, not as much, but also Rural Aid in their budget work they're doing in the House, certainly. Just announcing, probably old news by now, Jackie Palk, who is Secretary at Hatfield Elementary, is going to be moving up to the Smith Academy. We interviewed tonight, very talented replacements, and interviewing tomorrow as well. So we hope to make that transition happen in the next week or two so that everybody can have a happy home and no more musical chairs. We do have a professional development day on Friday, and I'm sure Dr. Driscoll will talk about what the high school is doing, but at Hatfield Elementary School, we're going to be working on our writing program, the SRSD program. We have a speaker coming in virtually, and work groups have been organized and assigned. Shout-out to Heidi Poole and Sarah Woodard, who have really done the bulk of the organization on this, and they really have done a phenomenal job putting it together. And also, I wasn't sure if I told you, but the CPA has voted to support the walking path, which is exciting. And so that'll start this summer, if it's passed by the town voters on the meeting floor. And that is it.
Awesome, thank you. Can you just clarify for me the walking path? What phases did the CPA group approve?
There'll be phases one and two.
To make it a full recreational loop?
It won't be quite full. It'll be around the, we'll go from the back of the parking lot around to the front of the building. We won't do that other part.
Right, but it will kind of be a.
It'll make a complete circle around the building. That's the goal.
Awesome, okay. What questions do other committee members have? I would also just really like to say, welcome to Ms. Petra. We are so excited to have you here. Thank you. And I'm also super excited that you're starting on Monday.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That's real awesome.
It's like a great update. How many para professional vacancies are there currently that we're looking to fill?
I believe we're one and a half at H Hatfield Elementary, and we are two at the high school.
Math intervention was just posted, so, right?
Yes.
When is that ending?
Well, until filled. It's been posted, and I haven't had any candidates yet. I had one.
Is that a full-time spot?
No, it's a .6.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Mr. Wood for filling in as principal down at the elementary school.
Truly my pleasure. Really, I've learned a lot about our schools, and so it's been a great opportunity for me.
Nothing like diving right in.
Nothing like that. I'm a little rusty.
All right. If there are no other questions for Mr. Wood, let's hear from Dr. Driscoll.
So I think everyone has the written update, so I'll kind of do some Cliff Notes if that's okay. So our winter sports are the season, so all come to a conclusion with our boys' basketball and co-op ice hockey team wrapping up their seasons this last weekend. So kudos to them for working hard and making it into the state tournament. They did a tremendous effort. Phil Patelli, our middle school math teacher, congratulations to him. He was nominated and awarded the Pioneer Valley Teacher of Excellence Award from Hatfield Public Schools. He was awarded that last week, so congratulations to him. Deadline for players to register for spring sports is this Friday, so it's quickly approaching. We're encouraging as many people as we can to register. We have baseball, we have softball, we have co-op lacrosse as well. We have MCAS beginning soon, so that's going to be coming in the next couple of weeks for ELA, and then math, and then science as we go into our spring testing season. We have successfully transitioned from test-and-stay protocols and contact tracing now to providing those home tests and pooled testing, which has been really, really helpful. We're continuing to see low numbers and declining numbers of positivity, which is a great trend. The March band concert that I had inadvertently advertised, that was from an old calendar, and there was no March band concert there. It'll be a spring concert later in the spring. Next, on Friday, it's a PD day, so we're bringing back Freeman Stein. He's from the Collaborative. He's going to be doing some more project-based learning work with us at both the middle and the high school. We're excited to continue that work. As was talked about before, I'd like to congratulate the group of 18 students and three staff who made it all the way to and back from Panama safely over the February break. Did amazing work. They volunteered to help build a primary school, immerse themselves in culture and the language and the community, and just, you know, from all accounts, were just incredible stewards of Smith Academy, you know, and kind of brought our values where they went, which was really nice. So that's going to be something that's remembered for quite some time, forever. As Hadley, you talked about, next week, I'll be starting to experience my first March Madness, so that'll be exciting. And then we are also excited to bring back the Variety Show this year on April 9th. So you are all cordially invited to a variety talent optional show at Smith Academy.
Yes.
And then we also have the Spring Theater production coming up with your good man Charlie Brown. That's going to be the last week, the Friday through, Thursday through Saturday of the second weekend of April break, so April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And that's everything to look forward to up at Smith Academy.
Awesome, thank you so much. All right, what questions do we have for Dr. Driscoll? Anybody? Very good. Awesome, thank you so much. All right, Ms. Bremner?
All right, well, as Mr. Wood mentioned, we thought we had filled, but now we're re-looking for para professional at HES. Throughout this year, with Connor and with other staff members, we have interviewed dozens of folks, so it's, we have had interest in the walking-in-the-door piece is what we've yet to really accomplish. So I just wanted to share that, though, because we really have vetted a lot of people and are hopeful that we'll be able to fill that position soon. Our part-time BCBA position appears to be making the final steps now. So we had a number of qualified applicants. We've had, we were doing reference checks early in the week, but our finalists did meet with Mr. Wood today, so we're moving forward there. And in the meantime, we've been contracting with ABAS like we did in the fall when that position was temporarily open, so we've had a continuation of services, which is good. I want to congratulate Mary Shanafelt, our middle school special ed teacher. She welcomed a baby girl right around the vacation. And I'm thankful to Gabby Carpenter, who has stepped up as the long-term sub in that position. From a programming standpoint, we've added a few more testing batteries to what we offer in-house. One specifically for students with complex vision and motor needs, and then another in our speech and language world, a battery that previously needed to be borrowed from other districts. We purchased in-house. Denise has completed the access testing for our EL population, and we are continuing to prepare, myself and Robin, for our tiered focus monitoring later in the month. And I want to thank James Hinahan and Nicola Fleur for starting to outline our SEL supports at the elementary school in a tiered manner. So we have a draft, a working draft, and they're doing some work this Friday at the PD day to continue to develop that. Two of our teachers went to MCAS Alternative Portfolio Training in the last couple of weeks, and I had a great conversation with the Western Mass Fed Directors the other day. So that's my update.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, so how's the OG training going?
It's going, yep. So we have, it's really, Connor started this, so I'm catching up on it. But we have three staff in it, two classroom teachers, one special education teacher, and they are all doing their tutoring hours on-site with Hatfield Elementary School students after school. So that's an added benefit to the students that were selected based on the criteria of the training. So, yep, so there, it's a lot of work. That's what I've been told a lot of. But they're doing a fantastic job balancing everything at school and this added. It's a lot of work, so we're really appreciative.
There are just two classes left?
There are two more in-person classes.
In-person classes.
And they're a little ways away. I think one like May or something. And then they'll continue their hours throughout, so.
Could you speak briefly to the benefit that that brings, HES?
So Orton-Gillingham is a structured reading program. It really helps align with the dyslexia guidelines that came out. We're so grateful that we already have two trained OG folks in-house, but this helps spread the expertise to the different tiers. So we'll have some classroom teachers, we'll have special ed, we'll have the interventionists. So it can look a little bit different than just, you know, just the interventionist's able to do it. So hopefully, we'll be getting to a larger group of kids and supporting. We always want all of our interventions, Tier 2 and 3, to shift to Tier 1, so we're hoping it'll also add to just the coaching of all of our general ed teachers as well in the active reading for all of our young learners.
Are you allowed to tell us who is taking the training or no? If you can't, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Yeah, I don't see why not. Carrie Gallet, Kim Robinson, and Kelsey Brunel.
Very good, thank you.
Big investment on their, on their time as well.
Sounds like it.
Very appreciated.
Massive.
It's hugely beneficial, though, so it's really appreciated, yeah.
The BCBA position is part-time, is that point?
.4. It was previously shared with Frontier, so with that other side, it made it a full-time position, but our portion was always .4, .5. So once I analyze the grid, we have, we have to have a day, and we've added a second day to do other evaluations, observations, those kind of things. So we have what we need in order to catch any new needs, so.
Great, anything else? Thank you so much. And Ms. Petra, we will not expect you to give us a report today, but.
Next month, ladies.
Next month. I know, we're totally looking forward to it. All right, did you have anything else?
No.
All right, excellent.
Doctor?
Yes?
Is Hadley staying for a reason that we want to?
I just wanted to stay tonight.
Okay.
She was given the option to.
I love it.
We love you to be here.
Yes.
I just said, now, if there was something specific and you wanted to get out of here.
No.
We're glad to have you.
You're welcome to stay as long as you want. All right. So next, on our informational reports, we discuss subcommittee work, so we will move to the Policy Subcommittee, and I will have Ms. Maloney start us off with the report on our meetings.
Sure. The Policy Subcommittee met on March 4th. Mr. Wood, Ms. Bench, and Nurse Jean were present for that meeting, and myself. We were tasked with reviewing EBC supplemental policy, and we went through that, and we, and a copy of that is available on the district website. We wanted to go through and kind of clean it up a little bit, streamline some of the resources that were cited throughout the document because there are quite a few different entities involved. And then updating the, updating the policy based on DESI guidelines, the removal of contact tracing, the pool testing, and updated the policy on face coverings. So the policy would now state, and you would have all gotten a copy hot off the presses tonight. So the policy states that face coverings that covers the nose and the mouth may be worn by individuals in the school building and on school transportation, but is not required. It should be noted that face coverings are still required in medical offices at this time in certain scenarios. So we can discuss the specific edits to the policy? Oh, okay. So, yeah, like Jen said, you know, we went through, we did make some substantial changes. There were different references to the CDC, or to DESI, or to DPH, and so we tried to sort of streamline. And, you know, as a policy committee, we tried to discuss what our recommendation would be regarding what kind of guidance we are following and how we write this to sort of continue to evolve as the pandemic evolves. So we do, what does the committee want to do? Would we like to go through it by sections and discuss? I can walk us through it if we want.
There's a few different things that were in here. Is that, should I just toss it all?
Ignore the second part.
Because I made like.
I know, so.
Okay.
The first part of the packet should have more or less the next updates. There was an old draft that was sort of inadvertently contained, which can be ignored.
Okay.
And then I have my original notes here from our committee meeting, and the color copy that committee members have is the one that's like.
Final.
Streamlined. It's like the final, right. And it's like, it doesn't reflect the changes, but it's the easiest to read.
Okay.
Because it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't have like the strokes crossed out.
Right.
So do you want to just use this copy and tell us what?
I think let's just walk through it.
And not look at the other.
It's probably easiest.
Sure.
Yeah, because, yeah, I have lots of questions. I know, I know, and I. Like, I definitely apologize for that.
No, it's fine.
But we can just take the time to like.
Perfect.
Do this perfectly. Exactly. So the, and then I think hopefully that will also benefit the community, you know, just to kind of hear us walk through it, and then once, obviously, a policy is approved, it's available to anyone on the website.
Right.
So, all right, so EBC supplemental interim policies on COVID-related issues. The introduction is the same.
Yep.
The first couple paragraphs remain the same. Because contact tracing is, you know, those recommendations have sort of changed, the town, the town contact tracing, COVID coordinator stuff has sort of changed. We edited some of that just to reflect those changes. We did still acknowledge that there could be theoretically situations that would require some kind of short-term emergency action. I would like to emphasize that that is always true 100% of the time, right? So like if there's a fire, or a flood, or something else, there could be something that the Board of Health would say, "It is not safe to be in this building," or the superintendent would have to make a call. This just speaks to some sort of like vaguely COVID-related things that theoretically could happen. I'm not saying we're planning on it.
Right.
We certainly hope not, but the policy does acknowledge that that could remain. We also, so if you're looking at the top of page two, you know, "In all scenarios listed, the administration will contact DESI, and Hatfield Public Schools will follow any recommendations or guidance they provide," which is true of any time. We would have to, you know, have an emergency closure, but would also be true for a COVID-related emergency. Correct? Yeah, we call it. All right. So next section that has process. "The administration will continue to communicate with the HPS community as needed. We continue to emphasize mitigation strategies, which include hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection, and then testing per DESI protocols." Those have also changed frequently. Currently, we are still doing pool testing, but we wanted the policy to reflect that those things are changing, and we are recommending that we continue testing per DESI protocols.
Is there talk about them taking away the pool testing, or no?
Not at this time. I think we're just like, because they have made different changes in the past.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, but.
I hadn't gotten wind of that, so.
No, 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 no.
Feel that out in a second.
Nope, nothing, nothing new for that. And then obviously, budget, you know, committee is still going to be discussing the financial impacts of COVID-19 on the district.
Can I ask a quick question while we're here? The cleaning of the classrooms and that lovely machine that we've been using, what's the status of doing that? When would we use that?
So we will only use it when there's been a flu or COVID case. So we will only use it when there's been a flu or COVID case in that classroom.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Where currently we do it every single day?
It's on a schedule.
Okay.
Not every day.
Okay, so it's not every day.
We will do the nurse's office and the preschool every day because there's, you know, the two most important mitigation are masks and vaccinations. And they can have neither, you know, they're not really using either.
And cleaning improves so many things. So I think some of these things have, I hope, have been sort of like embedded into our, just like our daily work, like we're washing our hands, you know?
And not even just the washing of the hands, I think the machine is.
Right, yeah.
If there's some, a stomach bug in a certain class, I want to prevent it. It'd be really great to just have that bombed.
I mean, I think we can all say our households for the both part have had a lot less of other things by and large, which is nice.
Yeah. Okay. Next section, DESI protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios. The administration will follow current protocols regarding response to COVID-19 scenarios, which this is referring to DESI has specific document that is their protocols for, for instance, if a child were in school when they tested positive. And those have again been changed a number of times over the past few months. So we are referring back to as DESI updates those protocols for what we do, we are following those protocols. And please, let's emphasize again, students and staff should not report to school if they're experiencing symptoms and they should consult with their primary care doctor.
Right.
Okay. I'm just, hold on, I've got my different sections here. All right, so we moved things a little bit from the original one. We reordered some things, which made it a little confusing. So then we have face coverings is next.
Yep.
You know, Hatfield Public Schools is committed to providing a safe environment. I'm just reading this. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth may be worn by individuals in school buildings and on school transportation. HPS will follow current DESI guidelines for face coverings. Per DESI guidance, face coverings may be required in certain scenarios. So as we discuss this, MASC, the Massachusetts Association for School Committees, had produced actually a very lovely policy that reflected the updated DESI guidance. And everything was written out. And even between the time when they published that and when we met, the federal order for transportation changed and there were these other changes that occurred. So we are recommending that we continue to follow the updated guidelines, acknowledging that they may continue to change.
Genius.
Just to, you know, sort of.
Come back tomorrow and fix it?
Well, and we want to say that we're recommending that DESI is tasked with the health and safety of elementary and secondary schools in the state of Massachusetts. They are working together with the Department of Public Health. And, you know, they currently, it's, you know, the CDC has similar guidelines. So to sort of avoid this, like discrepancies between the recommendations, that is what we recommend. And, you know, currently DESI guidelines do require face masks in certain situations. School nurse's office, after certain exposures.
It's still the five days if you're vaccinated.
Yeah, five days.
You're out five days, you come back and the second half of your five days is masked, right? I'm just making sure all the same.
Yeah.
Speaking of the nurse's offices, are we going to have masks available outside her office for?
Absolutely. And a great point, we have so many N95 masks that we would love people to wear. And so they're, I mean, they're free.
Yeah. I mean, they'll still be at the doorways as well.
They'll be at the school, yes.
Because for kids who want to wear them.
Yeah.
Or adults.
Absolutely.
So a student that needs to go see the nurse.
Should be able to.
Who didn't wear one to school gets one at the door of the nurse. Perfect.
Absolutely. All right, if it's okay with you guys, let's just continue going through the policy and then we can kind of discuss everything at the end. The next section, the updates to current policy, this is like where MASC had basically recommended these like single-line updates to other policies. The only change that we made to this, and I am trying to make sure I see it correctly, was. Visitors and temporary instructions. So we clarified in temporary instruction, the district shall provide work packets for students who are temporarily homebound due to illness, quarantine, or disability. And then, yes, visitors. So visitors in school buildings, we just omitted some lines to sort of align with everything else. Temporary instruction. So the visitor section says, you know, the superintendent may propose suspension or modification of the district policies regarding visitors to school buildings during the school day after school hours. All visitors and volunteers admitted to either school building will be required to follow all health and safety guidelines.
So we took out limited to a central district and our school business only.
Sort of like reflecting where we want to go. What is happening?
Yeah. And we took out a line about curbside pickup.
Oh, that's right. Okay. And.
What's the line about curbside pickup?
There was a line about curbside pickup. Which is still an option if people would like to work with the school to do that.
But it's not mandatory.
No, it's not. And then the very last section just says, you know, the policy will remain in place. And it's obviously subject to change based on updated guidance. The only other thing that I will say is that, yeah, things might change. I guess that's all I have to say.
And then the references were updated.
The references were updated.
Yep.
Exactly. All right. Committee members?
Questions?
Questions? Let's do it. Let's dive in.
My questions are about the visitors in schools. So does that mean that parents who need to bring in meds or sign their kids in or out, are they allowed into the office to do that now? Or do we still have to do it in the vestibule at the elementary school?
Yay.
They can go inside? And you referenced something about curbside pickup. Did you mean for student pickup?
There was a line before that said, where's the?
I think it's when a student went home sick, not like after school.
Okay, so.
So it says, do you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Parents and guardians are strongly encouraged to work with office staff to coordinate curbside pickup and drop off materials or supplies for students when necessary.
I think that was more like when we weren't in school, right?
Right.
More like remote?
Yeah, we were just like, oh, this is still here.
Okay. Are we changing our pickup routine at all at the elementary school then? I mean, previously it used to be that the kids were dismissed into the cafeteria. Parents parked, walked in the building, got their kid, and left.
I think what we're doing.
Pre-pandemic.
Yeah, I think what we're doing now works very effectively and efficiently.
We didn't discuss that specifically, but.
It does seem like it works fluidly.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if, what the intent was.
I think we mostly removed the line because you don't, like if you're bringing something and you don't have to do curbside pickup. You certainly can't.
I'm so glad we clarified that, though. Because that would be the number one thing to like.
Oh, no, how do I?
What's changing in the morning is changing in pickup. So I guess what I'm hearing is nothing is changing.
Nothing is changing.
About dropping kids off or picking kids up.
We're talking about materials, not human beings.
The thing that is changing is that parents will be buzzed into the building to speak to office staff or whatever.
As opposed to just the vestibule.
Yes.
You got it.
That's wonderful.
It is wonderful. All right. Do you have questions?
Oh, I do. But I don't need to, I want to make sure Kathy's.
I'm all set. I'm ready for that motion.
I have questions.
Yeah.
Just because I think it's really good to be clear and give a lot of information because ideally we reach a conclusion that everyone is comfortable with in our community because we've had a lot of, you know, various times where people have not been. So as we seek to ask DESI to be the beacon that we follow, I have a question about what information from our district goes to DESI? Because that would be the information that would be part of their calculus of what's going on. And so I'm curious just to understand what we're still collecting? Because some of the recent updates and some of the new protocols, it sounds like very little information is going to DESI as it relates to COVID.
Yeah, all we report is weekly the number of students or faculty that have COVID.
And how are we determining who has COVID?
It could be multiple ways. It could be through the pool testing, it could be or self-reported.
And pool testing, what percentage of our school population is now part of pool testing?
Is Jean still on here? It's very low, you know, comparatively. I would say it's less than 50% or probably slightly more than 30%.
Okay. So DESI has made their recommendations based on state averages, which are, my understanding is really like 49, 50% of the school population statewide is part of the pool, which impacts how you catch outbreaks. So we're still under the state average. Okay. So that's one way we report in. And then the people that self-report in is that, are we expecting those to just be anybody who chooses to call in? Or is it primarily people who are coming out of those pools?
It's anybody.
Yeah, if you're sick and you test positive, you tell them.
Because we have the kids going home now, so.
And I think communication has been excellent.
That's great. I think everyone needs to hear that that's happening. So that's really good. And do we have, do we have information about the percentage of vaccinated school population? Because there've been some people who have been giving numbers. So I'm curious if we have an actual, we know, I mean, we know what the town rate is, but that's not necessarily the school population.
Right. I mean, I get this updated report monthly, but it's only single vaccinated group. So it's, which is still very high, but it's not fully vaccinated. So I don't.
Just because that number is not being presented.
Correct.
Like they could be.
They could be.
So what's the new number for the school population first vaccine?
First vaccine? I'd have to look it up, but.
I mean, the last time you sent it to us, it was 95%.
It's 95% for our 12, for 12 and up.
Yep.
I think it's in the 70s, like 73%.
Okay.
For 5 to 11.
Yes. We also do have, right, any students that are at school that are symptomatic would go to the school nurse and then they require a negative COVID test to return to school.
Okay, so that was one of my next questions because there's a comment about testing symptomatic students. Do they have to already have a waiver on file to have that test?
They need a waiver on file.
What percentage of our population has a waiver on file?
I'd have to ask Jean directly.
I would say, though, Jean also reaches out to parents.
She does, she has to call.
And the protocol would be that there's, someone has a symptom, she would call them, whether or not they have a waiver, say, your child is in my office, I would like to do a test. If there's a waiver on, easy. If there's not, she can discuss consent for, you know, like a waiver for that and then it can.
And then.
Right.
The younger kids, what is it? The 5 to 11 is 73% in Hatfield. 12 to 15 and 16 to 19 are over 95% for Hatfield. Obviously, we have a ton of school choice kids, too. So that would be, they would be calculated within their own towns, but.
Right. Well, and I think too, based on that question, we should clarify the consent on file for the nurse to test as a result of the pool testing. Right? So my understanding is if you signed up, and I don't want to misspeak. If you signed up for pool testing, that also provided your consent that if you were in a pool that tested positive or you came to the nurse symptomatic, that would be the consent for the nurse to test to give you a rapid.
The same form.
That same form.
I thought it was two different forms, but I think they went out together and I bet they're all in together.
There was, I believe there was two forms, one for pool testing and one for the home kits.
But before, so there are some people that filled out the pool testing stuff before. If that still allows Jean to test, that's good for them to know that that's on file. Okay. Here we go. So I'm just making sure we've got, because I think there's a lot of misinformation and this is how we get it out, right?
Well, and I think too, the assumption would be, though, that if your child falls into these scenarios, that the school nurse would be reaching out and contacting her.
That's definitely part of the protocol.
And so here's, if there is a symptomatic kid who goes to the nurse and they're not going to test, they're going home, correct?
Right.
So they're not back in class.
And then they're required to show a negative test to return to school.
Or is there a period of time? What's the, what is the window at this point?
It would.
If they're symptomatic?
If they're symptomatic and they don't test. I mean, I can't imagine that happens, but if it does, it's just, there's a day. DESI gives a number of days.
DESI has a whole packet.
I get it, I get it.
From symptoms, right? I think it's 10 days from the last day you were symptomatic.
So if you're symptomatic, right? Somebody has a runny nose and a cough, they're now classified as possibly having COVID. So they have to go home and take a negative COVID test.
It would be at the nurse's discretion.
If the waiver's on file, you could just do it, wait your 15 minutes, get a negative test and go back to class.
Or the nurse could call a parent and say, I have your child in my office. I'm concerned because they're showing symptoms of COVID. I have a rapid test here.
But anything is a symptom of COVID.
But that's where it's going to be up to the true. And we did, we did talk about this with Nurse Jean at the meeting. It's going to be up to nurse discretion because right now anything can be a symptom of COVID.
That's why it's so expeditious to just get tested.
Right.
It just rules it up.
Guardian can give verbal permission to Jean on the phone at the moment of question?
We don't like to do that, quite frankly, but we send, we will take it and send the form home. And we need the form back. We need that on file.
That's, yeah, that's what I was. Okay. So. How are we, so there's, part of the policy talks about certain situations that still require a mask. Like someone who was positive and is no longer symptomatic, coming back to school and wearing a mask. Can you guys talk about how are we, how or if we are monitoring that? Because now, I mean, right now, everybody wears a mask with a few exceptions that you probably know. So we're changing that equation into a world where probably very few people will have a mask and some will. Anybody could, of course. But then there's going to be some kids who wouldn't have, but now need to because they fall into this certain situation. So what is, is there someone who is tapped to monitor that? Is there, is it just we're going to say, okay, we're expecting everybody to just play by the rules? Is there information going to staff so that they are aware of those days? And so what does that look like in reality? And I'm, I mean, it's Smith Academy. I'm assuming that those students are old enough to just be responsible to take care of it and do it. Some of our littler.
Yeah, but you have to also put trust in their parents that they're telling them that, okay, Bobby Joe, you're wearing your mask for the next five days because you're.
But, okay, but they're not there. So it's, I'm just saying, is there anyone who is responsible for that?
I don't think there should be.
Or if there is no one responsible for that, it's just all going to be.
I mean, A, it's going to be a very small number.
Right.
It would be my expectation that the nurses in both buildings would make contact with those individuals during the course of the day. So they would be a check-in. And.
Because they're actively monitoring for symptoms and stuff at the same time.
And so beyond that, it is going to be the honor system to the, you know, point. We're not going to order somebody to put on their mask.
And we're not asking teachers to be like, okay.
We're not asking them to be mask-free or anything like that.
Okay.
And I will say that, I mean, this has been going on for two years. I think that our students know how to wear masks correctly and mask compliance has been excellent.
I think that's true, too.
So the hope is that with some messaging, you know, people would.
With some messaging, and I think that's important. But I also think asking you to do it when everybody's doing it and asking you to do it when nobody else is doing it is really different and requires a different sort of awareness and responsibility. and requires a different sort of awareness and responsibility for kids. And so I'm, you know, asking questions.
You know, I'm thinking about, you know, it's a serious medical piece, and when kids know the seriousness of it, especially young kids, they'll follow through, you know, they'll wear it.
Right.
I can say, in my personal experience from being in the public schools when this happens, is it doesn't, in implementation, seem quite as big of a struggle. A student kind of knows coming back, this is your start date. Your end date is then, you know, whatever it is, Thursday or Friday or whatever. The school nurse is aware, the teacher is aware, and it has not been a problem.
And, you know, I think we need to emphasize too, that nothing about this says that masks aren't allowed. Anybody can certainly do that, and there are absolutely families who are going to make the decision to send their children in masks, which we completely support.
Yep.
I think though, to Chrissy's point, you know, teachers aren't tasked with like remembering every single child and who has, you know, who does. Like, it is something that, you know, families are going to be, you know, messaging with their own families.
Well, and I just think there are parents who are going to want to know who was on the hook for that because their kid's sitting not three feet away.
It's important to talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, I had, so there is on the first page, at the very bottom, the last bullet is, evidence of widespread in-school COVID transmission. So talk to me about what is evidence? And how is it collected? And when, what are we counting as evidence of widespread? If only a third of our students are in pool testing, is there other evidence?
So, you know, it is sort of hard to say. We discussed this at length with, you know, with Jean and also with, you know, the Board of Health. Their monitoring has also changed, so it is a little bit vague here. We basically, I think, wanted to acknowledge that that is still possible. I mean, contact tracing, COVID monitoring is still occurring at the town. We do still report our in-school numbers. We are still working with various public health officials who sometimes seem to be changing. But, you know, we are working with them so that, you know, if we did have a big spike, I think it would be monitored through, you know, the Board of Health and then through the school reporting, how you report to DESI.
Right.
Right?
Are we reporting from school to the Board of Health? Or are we required, are we expecting?
We are. Yeah. Don't we do it daily?
We don't do it daily, but we do it weekly. When we publish the numbers to DESI, we publish them.
To DESI, it goes to Board of Health and the town, you know, so it can be reported to the town.
So I guess my last question is on this subject, but it's not in the policy. So I just want to, while we're on the topic. So Superintendent Wood, you sent a note out to families. Your weekly note talked about some of the other measures that are going to be changing. And so to put it back to the analogy that Jean has been really consistent with, which I think has been, made a lot of sense about the Swiss cheese, how it's all about the layers. So we're looking in this policy to remove masks. And I get, I think the Board of Health was wise to give a period after a big vacation break to make sure we didn't have anything going on. And now we're looking at removing masks at the same time we are changing the lunchroom and how close kids are going to be sitting in classrooms. Can you guys speak a little bit to why all of those layers of cheese are going at the same time versus maybe having a little more of an off-ramp that staged that?
Yeah, so, you know, the way I'm looking at it is, I am looking at our local numbers. I know that Hampshire County has the largest population of people with COVID in the state. But as I look at our data and understanding that masks, we're making them optional, and we're encouraging vaccinations, those are the two layers that really work the best and work effectively together. And, you know, as I think about in-school transmission, other than maybe one instance earlier on in November, we really haven't been able to look at anything that's school transmission of a significant amount at either school. Certainly not at Smith Academy, other than, again, maybe one event. But it was probably from an outside event that occurred. So, you know, if we find that things ramp up again, and, you know, quite frankly, the, as I look at the kids and their proximity, and they're not wearing their masks in the cafeteria, whether it be at the elementary school or at Smith Academy, if spread was going to happen, it was going to happen, you know, and we, you know, as best we could to be six feet apart. They didn't have their masks on, you know, it was going to happen. You know, we'll look at that and we'll monitor, you know, how many we can get into the cafeteria at Hatfield Elementary. I'm told that we can do it in every other seat with the tables.
Yes.
So, you know, that's probably the direction we'll go to give them at least space. And then, you know, within the classrooms, we've been doing rug time for quite a while now. You know, so that's not going to be a big change in practice. As I look at death spacing, it's, you know, three feet at best. But, you know, there are kids who are at tables at the elementary school. So it's really not a big change. It may be a big change in terms of the classroom, the one classroom, but it's not a big change in terms of how the school has operated as a whole.
I think that's nice to hear you articulate that because I don't think that that was necessarily the impression folks got when they read that. So to know that this has already been what's been going on for the most part, and to hear that there's still going to be an effort, particularly in the cafeteria, because that's the one place, so even if you did send your kid in a mask, they can't, in the cafeteria, that's not an option. So having some space would be important to those folks.
Yeah.
And I guess my last question, so you mentioned masking and vaccination are obviously the biggest ways of protection. We still have two classrooms at HES who cannot vaccinate. So have you guys, what was the conversation? Because I've got to believe you had the conversation.
Yes.
What was the conversation about what to do with pre-K in particular until they are at least eligible for vaccination?
Yeah, so we did talk, you know, pretty extensively about the preschool because, you know, while vaccination is so great, obviously, like you said, there are, you know, some students who are unable to be vaccinated at this time. And I think all of us care very deeply about protecting every member of our community. But we're also hoping, you know, for a policy that we could simply apply to the entire district. I think some of the thought process when we discuss the preschool is that there are some benefits. They are more isolated geographically from the rest of the building. It's, so it's like smaller numbers overall. They have their own playground. They have their own, like, eating, you know, eating time. And we felt that it was a more protected environment with lower numbers. And masks can still.
Still be worn.
I think the other thing too is our numbers still in preschool have been very, very good. We're not seeing that with that population. They don't appear to be at more risk. And they are, you know, a group, I think to Michael's point earlier, if there was going to be spread, we probably would have seen it. There, I still get the weekly photos, which are great, and they're in dramatic play, and they're putting on the costumes, and they're very close to each other. And preschool students, masks don't always fit exactly how they're supposed to. I personally do feel that if we were going to see that spread within those rooms, I think that we already would have seen it.
I think for some of the reasons you've just articulated are the reasons why, of all the places, it makes more sense to me to keep preschool masked because wearing masks is always about me protecting you, not me protecting myself. So, and because it's, they're, of all the groups who probably have a hard time, both because of fit and because of, they're little tiny people who are wiggling around. I mean, they're, wearing masks to protect each other at that age makes a lot of sense to me because the likelihood of getting, you know, your three and four-year-old to be in an N95 that's form-fitted all day, it's going to be a real challenge. So I'm, while I am not struggling on a lot of these fronts, but I feel like it's really important to articulate some of this, I am struggling with preschool going unmasked because.
Mask optional.
Except that I don't, I don't think, I don't think in any case, for the most part, until you get into like respirator-level masks, it's, that's not what, it's optional, but that doesn't mean that you're protecting yourself.
I think, I think that with preschool though too, we talk about the age of social, emotional growth and learning. These are also kids who, if they're in that, you know, three to five-year-old age range, these are kids that have never had normal socialization, where they can see each other's faces, where they can have playdates, where they can learn to read facial expressions, where they can hear language well, develop their phonological awareness skills.
I mean, that's all the way up to second grade.
For those, you know, and preschool has also too, been, it's looked different for them the last couple of years. They've been at tables, and I think that, given our numbers and given the continued decline, given the fact that if we were going to see an increase coming out of preschool because preschool is at higher risk, we would have seen it already.
And we have, I mean, a lot of schools in the state have already had no masks for almost two weeks now. And I think if there was an issue, we would have heard about it.
Good point. That's fair. So is there any other monitoring that's going to happen from the school in terms of looking at what's going on locally? Or is the, so that would be the Board of Health potentially?
Board of Health.
Is the Board of Health, have they communicated in terms of what they're watching? And that they are going to be active in keeping an eye as to what's going on, particularly with our feed or other additional communities that come in?
Yeah, I mean, I think up until now, the Board of Health has been quite involved in monitoring the numbers and, you know, managing any possible, you know, testing protocols or any other question of transmission at school. They've been very active in that, and I anticipate that will continue, you know.
Well, and we're getting, right, a Hatfield weekly report, and then it's known whether those numbers are, have impacted the school community at all.
The Board of Health is looking at that, for sure.
Yes, specifically.
Because that's, again, it doesn't get reported out, so it's good for people to know that the Board of Health is watching that. Specific to the policy, and it's a small thing, but as you guys cleaned up the links, given that if we track with DESI and what their things are, it feels to me that there would be an opportunity to add links where the DESI protocols for responding, it would be helpful to put the link in that part of the text so that people are like, oh, well, what is DESI's protocol? And it's going to change.
Changed a couple times.
Could you just, is there a link that their stuff, where you wouldn't have to change the link?
No.
Well, we talked about.
We could send them to the page.
We could send it just to the page.
That's what I'm talking about.
Didn't we talk about too, in the weekly communications?
We did talk about this.
That that would, we had talked about that probably easier for parents than trying to navigate DESI's website and to keep up with the forever-changing.
Guidelines.
Guidelines that, just in the weekly updates, that there would be links so that people could just, families could just reference their emails.
And that is definitely something that we talked about as we were drafting this, you know. To what degree did we want to be specific? We had to think about a lot of different things. And ultimately, you know, while the policy certainly guides the district, what is, you know, a parent going to look to? Are they going to look up our policy to find specific things? Or are they going to refer to the email or what it's going to be? So, you know, we're hoping that, you know, our administration can continue to, you know, help message the most up-to-date things in a way that's like user-friendly, very simple.
User-friendly would be a big, big thing.
Yep.
Yeah, so I would also like to say, I appreciate that you guys have been tackling this for a long time, and it's been a lot of conversations, and it's been a lot of participation with Board of Health, with Jean, with administration. And so I thank you for taking it on, and I appreciate your patience in answering questions that I think folks want to understand better.
We're here to talk about it.
That's why I'm asking. Thank you.
Of course. Did you have any other questions?
No. Would you like a motion?
Yes. Bring it. Anybody?
I will make a motion to approve the EBC supplemental interim policies on COVID-related issues as presented.
I second. Any further discussion? Oh, I would just like to also publicly acknowledge the fact that, as we have discussed, the Board of Health can certainly put in their own mandates for the school, and legally, that is an option for them. So, you know, should we vote for this policy? The Board of Health does still have their mandate in place until the 12th, and they are meeting tomorrow. Okay, just wanted to make sure we all also understand that we are setting this, but we can be overridden by the Board of Health.
If they do not change, if they do not extend and their order expires on March 12th, this would take effect for the schools on March 14th.
Yep, exactly. Okay, any further discussion?
I just want to be clear about one thing. I'm struggling with the pre-K decision. And so I just want to say, I agree with so much of this, that we're there. My disagreement is very specific to pre-K. And at the point that they have an option to get a vaccination, that I would shift. So I don't think it's going to matter.
I hear that.
So I'm just going to be clear for the sake of.
You know, I hope.
Preschool parents.
Yeah, and I also hope that, you know, like, as a community, we are in this together. It has been a very difficult two years. I think we've all felt that personally and publicly, you know, we've really felt that. And I hope that we can all recognize that we are neighbors, that we care about each other very deeply, and everyone is trying to do their, do the right thing.
And we care even when we disagree.
Absolutely.
And I think that folks need to see that too.
Yep.
I would just like to add too, that this is not, this is not permanent too. This is an ongoing analyzing, looking at numbers, making changes to this plan. So while right now, looking at what's going on in the communities around us that have made masks optional, and looking at the numbers, this policy feels very appropriate. But that's not to say that, you know, should we make masks optional and the data changes, that we wouldn't be coming back to the table and revising the policy.
So I think as you guys continue to look at that from a policy subcommittee perspective, my other broader concern with the policy as written is that there is very little path to gathering the information needed to make that pivot. So if we abdicate to DESI and DESI doesn't get a lot of information, and I personally wonder sometimes if DESI looks a lot at the western half of the state. And so it's on us to protect our community. And so I think we just need to find ways to be vigilant, to get information so that we're ahead of a curve and not behind it. And having check-ins with, you know, that make that more formal makes sense to me. But I leave that with you to solve.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we are going to continue checking in and, yeah, there's.
It's not, I mean, our numbers are great, but I don't think it's, it's not like COVID's gone.
No, I do think there have been some key changes, obviously, like COVID. Obviously, like COVID does still exist. We have better herd immunity, which is great. And the, you know, everybody, if you can get your vaccine, that's just personally, you know, that is one of the things that protects our preschool. For example, you know, we have better herd immunity. We have better treatment for COVID. It's much better. We have readily available tests so we can identify it quickly. So I do think, you know, there have been, you know, some, some differences, you know, at this point in the pandemic versus others. But we definitely will continue, you know, reporting those numbers to DESI, working together with the Board of Health to make sure that we can provide a safe environment for all our students that is optimal for learning.
I, I'm sorry, did you want to say?
No, I just most, you know, no, I don't need to say it. I'm good.
I mean, I, I think that we've seen though, that, that most of the spread, right, has been specific to homes and home specific. A lot of our preschoolers have siblings. We haven't seen spread within preschool. And then we're, we're getting, this is a very small town. We're, we're getting weekly updates on our numbers. And it's not difficult to figure out if those weekly updates are impacting kids in our schools or not. That's, that is weekly. In addition to, families still do have the option for weekly pool testing. And as someone who was previously hoarding and stockpiling rapid tests, I now, thanks to the school and the option to sign up for home tests, I have home tests to spare. So if you're also using, I mean, we are talking about testing our preschool students twice a week. We, we have the ability also to, we're not saying everyone needs to take their masks off. It is voluntary. And we can potentially be testing kids at a minimum twice a week for, for that type of growth academically and socially, emotionally, and weekly data at our fingertips. I support the policy.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate everyone's like honest discussion, respectful discussion. And yeah, I appreciate you all. Any further comments or questions? All right.
So are we waiving multiple readings?
We are, would you like to amend your motion?
To waive the readings, yes.
Okay. We will, we will waive that. All right. Hearing no other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. The motion passes four to one. All right. Thank you all. We shall continue in our meeting. It continues.
It continues on.
All right. Let's hear from the Budget Subcommittee and Ms. Danishewski.
I'm actually going to have
Going to have Ms. Boudreau.
I was ill for the meeting.
Dude, you have to tell me that in advance would be nice.
Sorry, dude. I bet you couldn't win it.
I will, I will, but you know, I'm not prepared now. So we had a really positive conversation this last month with some generosity from Janet Casey as we're talking about helping ensure that our school choice numbers stay up and grow potentially. So Janet Casey, as a marketing whiz, has come forward. And she and her team are putting in some time and help to help the district go after, essentially it's kind of a reminder campaign that school choice is coming open soon. And it will be predominantly social media, which makes a world of sense to me. And so I, I think it's great that the schools are going after that to help ensure that we're keeping school choice numbers up. We have a lot of positive stuff to share. And would be happy for neighboring districts to come pop their heads in and join us in Hatfield. So that was the bulk of our, our meeting was really there. And continuing conversations as town budget meeting is just around the corner. So.
All right. Thank you, Kristi. Does anyone have any questions about their budget meeting? All right. In which case, we will move to the Business Affairs portion of our meeting and start off with voting on one set of meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 9th.
I second that.
Any discussion or corrections to the minutes?
There were just a couple typos.
Yeah, I'm not even going to mention one. Not worth really to
Got it.
Personally. You can mention whatever you want.
Okay. And
Your name, my name.
I guess the only thing is, Mr. Wood, you prepared these?
I did.
So I'm just going to
Yeah.
Put your name at the bottom?
Oh, yeah.
I'll just make that edit up so we can keep track. All right. Any other discussion on the minutes?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. All right. Placement of a permanent marker on Judy Strong Field. And we have in our packet some information about the proposed marker. And I believe we have Mr. Casey here patiently on the Google Meet. Patiently, we thank you. Available for any questions that committee members have regarding this marker. So it looks like they have selected a three foot tall stone on a footing. And there will be wording on the stone in block letters with Olympic rings at the top and field hockey sticks at the bottom. The cost of the entire project will be paid for through fundraising donations. And they're hoping for late spring, early summer installment. We have some pictures here and the wording.
I have a question, but I don't know if Mr. Casey can answer it.
Yeah, go for it.
Sorry, Peter. It's just about the wording. And I don't know that you really had anything to do with that, so I apologize. But, so this is really just a kind of a question for everybody on the wording about the bottom line where it says S.A. alum and coach. Is there a reason that we're not printing out Smith Academy and going with S.A.? Do we have any idea?
I didn't put the wording together.
I usually for stone work each letter costs, so it may be a cost factor. I don't know.
Let's just make sure to
Yeah, I think the wording of this certainly can be reviewed. I think we're primarily looking for approval on location.
Okay.
You know, it has a new carbon stone yet, no pun intended.
Oh, that was excellent.
But yeah, I'm sure we can look into that. And I, I think you may be right about the cost, the additional cost. That's not one I have an answer to, so.
I mean, if we were looking to save money on letters, it, we couldn't, we don't have to spell out October. You know, it could be, it could be 10 dash 10 in the year. You know, like
Or not at all.
Or you know, I'm just, I'm just wondering. I just think it would look nice to have it say Smith Academy for somebody who stumbles across it.
I, I do agree to that. The picture here, if someone could, it's very hard. It's a little hard to see. So the, is the location of the marker where there's like a stick?
I think it's this.
Yes.
The stick? Okay.
Central to the picture, right?
Yeah. Perfect. That's the top left of the field, right? If you're walking up, I'm trying to envision it.
I think that would be the southwest corner, yes.
Oh, gosh. It's getting very specific. Driscoll, you, did you walk out there?
I did.
And see this? Do you have any other insight into the location? I'm sorry.
I could show a picture to the committee that might help. But I don't think I can project at home.
The pond is over here.
Hold on. The worst. That's not helpful at all. You got to tilt the screen down.
Oh, tilt the screen.
Oh, there we are.
There we are. So if you're, if you're walking from the school, kind of past the, past this, this is the baseball field here. And you get to the field hockey field, that's where the, this is when it was being built. I think the picture was taken.
Yeah. But it's a gray area.
Yeah, right where that X is, so that, that kind of corner down there.
All right. It's not going to get in the way of the pathway. That's what I was going to ask.
No, in fact, if people are walking on the path where it curves there, that'll be kind of right, right at that corner. So anyone who comes to the field will be able to see it.
And it's like, you know, like a nice, safe location where no athletes are going to like run into it.
It's on the other side.
I mean, I don't know.
So if I might be permitted to ask Ms. Zinal a question, since you're here.
Yes.
Chair, but you would allow for that?
With the permission of the chair, Ms. Zinal.
Yeah. Do you have an opinion about the position of this? Do you have any thoughts?
No, it looks great. I mean, I kind of look down right here. Yeah, that looks like a great spot. Definitely, I mean, you have like a ditch before it, so no one's going to run into it or anything around the field, you know? So I think it looks great.
I know. I needed to know the answer to that.
The rest of us don't know the field.
Ditch that she's talking about. All right. Mr. Casey, could you please just clarify for me the group that is doing the fundraising for this?
I think that's still being determined if, hang on one second.
Okay. Just like to know who's like spearheaded things.
I thought I had heard.
I think there's a small committee that's still being formed to raise the funds.
Like an ad hoc group?
Yeah.
Okay. Wonderful.
There's some particulars that need to be worked out as far as, you know, tracking the funds, reporting, I believe.
Okay.
And we'll make sure that we have that information for that fundraiser when it is going on.
Yes. Awesome. All right. Do committee members have any other questions on this topic?
No. Thanks for taking the work on. That's awesome.
Yes, and thank you for being here tonight to be available to our questions. So I very much appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to approve the placement of the permanent marker for the, on the Judy Strong Field.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Next time we hear from them, can we talk about a timeline?
Yes.
Just so that the timeline of that and the timeline of the path, at least those groups know
Yes.
about each other.
This will be done before the path. Because we don't, the, the path has to be brought to town. Vote. At the town meeting, so.
Or it might not be done before, but it's definitely not going to be.
Right.
Yeah, at the same time. There is also a question of a flag poll, which I did hear back from them, but they wanted to meet again. And so we didn't have information to present for today. But I'm hoping next month's meeting, we will have information about the flag poll. So maybe we can coordinate.
Dr. Driscoll, does that all come through your office at some point? Like you have eyes on all those pieces?
Yeah. I won't pull the teeny picture up again, but I have, there are a few different locations that we can, we can look at for the flag poll that, that makes sense. I think one makes the most sense, but we'll present all those options.
So we can Just three different groups in the same area doing stuff that
Totally. All invested in our athletic fields, which is so awesome.
Yeah, that was my
Sounds like wonderful improvements and enhancements.
Yeah, I'm just like, just don't want them, like somebody to knock over the thing.
On the walking path, no. All right. All right. Let's vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Passes unanimously. All right. Our final business item, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is school choice openings. So we did discuss this a little bit last month, but let's discuss again.
Did it have in your packet an updated sheet that adds back in the additional preschool, which is not a school choice piece, but also the, the additional second grade?
So if I'm reading this properly, school choice numbers all the way to the far right, that's how many you're looking to add?
Correct.
Because some of them don't match up. Like second grade, you have nine, and then you have zero in the column to the right of it.
I can't
So that might have just been an error. I don't understand the last, the last column does not have a heading. The last column
You just look under the school choice numbers column.
So that last column is nothing.
The last column that gets to 77, is that just
That's the column. Yeah.
Okay. So then, so then we, I just crossed it. Well, most of them match except for second grade and sixth grade. So maybe it just, the numbers just didn't get carried over.
I got to go in. I'm going to unplug the TV screen for just a second.
So that would actually be 88 spots. I'm assuming that adds.
And this puts pre-K back at two classrooms?
Back at two classrooms, but they don't get school choice, so
It's just sort of Do you know how many spots will be open for that though? I know it's not school choice, just curious.
Well, there'll be 15 in each classroom that will be open. But we have currently
There must be some already spoken for.
Yeah, that, we have the current three year olds that are going to be four year olds next year.
And that'll be 15 at any given time.
Right.
So we may have
Maybe more spots.
More than 30, but because they have funny schedules, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So you're going to continue to do three day, five day option?
And two day option too.
And two day. Oh, that's my, I'm sorry.
Okay. But not half days.
I didn't know I didn't do that. You're right. The nine should be carried over.
We prioritize the full day if we're keeping the two classes, right?
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, those numbers should have carried over, so it's 88.
Okay. Okay. So regardless of what this says, the, the numbers underneath, school choice numbers
Those are the actual numbers.
Is correct.
That's correct.
I wasn't totally wrong. All right. So to clarify, these numbers in this school choice numbers column are the number of spots that you are recommending we open
Correct.
As available school choice spots.
And that does not include existing school choice students?
No.
Well, so the existing are included in the existing size. So they're already captured. So it would be more. Correct. Okay. Yeah, we're on the same page.
So, so I'm just going, so target class size.
So I up the target class size so that it could up the numbers.
Was, that was going to be my next question, was about how we calculate the target class size. Yeah, because they look way higher than what I anticipated.
Yeah, I mean, we can, again, we can play with that. I mean, I, I grew them based on experiences in other districts that we had class size requirements.
There's also information that we, I know last year, we looked at the school committees.
School council.
Council. But like, what's the right term for that? The school councils had done a lot of work talking about specific class sizes that they wanted to see by school. Did we take a look at those again, or?
I didn't, I did not.
Okay.
I think these numbers line up with that.
They probably do.
They're close.
I mean, they're, they get larger at what, grade five?
Yeah, it goes up at three. I remember it being a lot smaller, like for first grade, I remember it being like 15, not 20.
That's my recollection as well.
The early grades look high versus before. But then it starts to level out.
Yeah.
That's my concern is the early grades. And I think I still have
And again, we can, we can look at those and lower them. And then they, you just, you just lose class size, you know, school choice seats. So if you lower first, if you lower first grade to 15, for example, you get down to zero.
All right. All right, so this is what we had last month.
In budget subcommittee, we had talked about trying to emphasize the lower grades.
Right.
For looking for growth.
Yeah, and we did discuss that at our last meeting, too. You know, that we would prefer to get students in at the younger grades, but if we're tapping them very low.
Then you can't get them in.
We can't get them in.
Right.
Exactly.
This, the numbers on the right, these are the projected numbers for the, for next years. Like this is next year's grade two numbers.
Correct.
Right, exactly.
So if you, if you jump, if you go as low as 15, then essentially you zero out kindergarten, first grade. I don't know what grade two was.
Uh, we had pre-K and K at 15. First and second were at 17.
Oh, 17, okay.
Third and fourth were at 18. Fifth and sixth were 20. And then the remainder, seven through 12, was at 22.
The thing is, you may not get people applying in each and every grade to the number.
Like nine spots.
Having, well, that one is, to keep the two classrooms, you probably do have that.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
So on this new sheet.
So if you go with those numbers, essentially, you go from 88 to 70, so you lose 18 seats.
And all in the elementary school?
All in the elementary school.
And for comparison, last month's sheet had 40 slots.
So we added.
We also added.
Right.
But that includes adding the pre-K. That's a chunk of it right there. Right? Or no?
No.
Pre-Ks. Cause it's not calculated with that.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm confused. Because if you, so for example, in kindergarten, we have 13, 1, 11, that comes to 27. If we stuck with our 15, that would give us three spots open, but we're only doing two for a target size of eight. It just does, that math doesn't add up to me.
Keep in mind, I subtract out two seats for any new growth in half-year.
Okay, see, so that's, okay, that makes more sense to me. Okay.
Right, cause anyone can move in at any time.
And how, how did the teachers feel about increasing those class size targets?
I haven't had that conversation with them directly. So, I mean, we're already at mid twenties in like fifth and sixth grade anyway.
Right, but I think the teachers would argue that K one and two are not as manageable at 20 or more.
Mm-hmm. Oh, I would never put 20.
Well, you have 20 down for first and second.
Yeah, but that's not how many he's accepting. So like, if you look at kindergarten, for example, 18 plus 18, right, is 36, minus the 27, what we actually have, which leaves nine spots open, which if you subtract two for move in, you have seven spots open. He's only asking for two spots. Did anybody follow that?
This common core math.
I'm like writing all of it down because it just doesn't make sense to me.
The chart's not helpful to me either.
It just doesn't make sense.
It's strange calculations.
Because if we're going for your target size, we should be opening seven spots in kindergarten. If we're staying with the 15 target.
Hold on.
Then we're looking at two spots, I think, 30, so that's three. Actually, we're looking at one spot if we stayed with the 15. Cause this comic core math.
You gotta, you gotta include, the way the formula works is you look at the existing population of kids. So we've moved everybody up. And then you divide by your target size. And then, um, and then essentially you, you then subtract the target size minus the, um, the, that middle column, the, the number of kids that you'd be getting in.
Well, okay. So in first grade next year, we'll have 26 kids if we don't add anybody.
Correct.
But if your target size is 40, like 20 and 20, which would be 40, so technically we should, and you take away two, you should be asking to accept 12 kids if we're following the target size of 20. You see what I'm saying? It just doesn't add right to me. But I, no, not so.
No, because you've got 26.
20, if we have 26 total kids right now.
In kindergarten, I've got 29 kids.
Okay, 27 I counted.
So.
You're counting the two plus.
There's nowhere that the, it doesn't add up anywhere.
No, I'm saying, is it these two?
So there's 29 kids in kindergarten. So if you divide that by.
13, 1, 11, and two is 27.
Maybe that's what it is.
I think you're counting the two for two classrooms.
No, you're looking at, you're looking at 23. Go to the left of your page.
Oh, okay.
And look under 22 and count the current kindergarten.
There's 26 of them.
So if, even if I'm looking at 23, that's next year's kindergarten class, right? Am I correct when I say that?
Yes, it is.
So when I say 13, 1, 11, and two comes to 27.
You can't do it from pre-K, cause you might not graduate all of them into kindergarten.
Pick a different grade.
Pick a different grade and try it.
Sorry, I'm adding, I'm adding more columns.
I'm not looking at pre-K numbers, I'm looking at kindergarten.
I had the, the number of classes.
But you're looking at the projected.
Right, these are projected numbers.
Danielle, you're looking at the projected number for September for kindergarten, which is not a known number at this point.
Right.
But if you pick a different grade, looking in the.
So if I look at kindergarten and I'm talking first grade?
Well, let's just take first grade, cause that's the, the current kindergarten right now. So that class has 26 kids in it. We have a target size of 18.
Right. Wait, are we looking at first grade? 18 and 18 is 36.
Okay. On, on the chart, it says a target size of 20.
Correct.
I, I know, but people talked about reducing.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure I, I'm tracking things.
36, so 36 minus 26 is 10, and then minus your two is eight. Would we, we would want eight spots if we're doing the 18. If we're doing 20, we would need 12.
So how did we get three, I think is the question.
I'm confused. I mean, I'm fine, I'm fine, I think I'm fine with these numbers, I've just, I'm, I'm not giving them to add correctly.
Clarifying, it doesn't add properly in my mind.
Um, Michael, can I comment this from a macro look for a minute? See if I've got the right adding it up holistically? So right now, we have 271 local students, 221 current school choice students, for a total of 392, which means that our school choice population is 31% of our student body.
Right.
Right.
If we were to fill all 88 spots, which again, this is about opening, you may not get all of those.
Right.
But if we would, that would bring our population, oh, I didn't add that unnecessarily, but it'd bring it around 480. Didn't take out the seniors, I just, okay. And with a roughly 209 in school choice, which would bring us up to about 44%.
Yeah.
Is that?
Probably, it would, yeah.
Okay. So I'm realizing, as I say that out loud, that I calculated the addition without taking out the senior class and bringing in the preschool. Preschool. I didn't swap those, but.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, that's right. So my formula on the account of one class. So if you take, my apologies.
Per class.
So, that's right, it would be three per class. So if you multiply that times two.
Yeah.
That's what we were trying to figure out, Danielle.
Okay, that's what it was.
And I was confused by column T.
There was two columns, I think, but.
My apologies.
I know.
Okay, so two per class, which would be actually four you're asking.
Right.
So if.
So that would bring in quite a few kids.
So like a, more than 100.
Over 150.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this updated class thing, we're looking at column U.
Correct.
Right. Do you mind just scrolling it down so?
Yep.
I can see it a little better. Sorry. Okay.
No, I can't see that.
Okay.
That's my no man's land, that distance. Glasses, no glasses, it doesn't matter.
Having a conversation, looking at the details is really confusing.
Yeah.
What do we need to accomplish tonight?
We have to, we have to open spots so that we can.
Open spots. We're trying to go live March 15.
Decide on how many spots.
What is, we have to open.
We just have to open spots.
Always come back and tweak here or there.
Yes, we can. We just pretty much have to say where we are going to have openings.
Is there any grade in which you would say do not have an opening?
Yes, you would not have an opening in grade six.
Or four.
Or four.
And that's based on the numbers that you just updated for target class size?
Correct.
Okay.
So if we went lower, that would reduce.
Right.
So if you want me to, to adjust those down lower.
Let's just leave it for a minute.
Kindergarten.
Right.
Currently now, there's none in current.
So for next year's kindergarten, there would be zero spots.
Right.
For kindergarten, fourth grade and fifth grade.
Fifth grade's huge right now, right? So it would be six, so we're not adding six.
Okay. And I will say, I mean, like.
How many kids is that?
The biggest numbers that we would be opening would be in the high school.
Correct.
Probably 20 in each classroom. Which, 10, 11, 12.
Again, I think people, you know, we would, it is best for us overall for continuity to get them in younger, so they're with our curriculum, and we know that they can do this absolutely. That is the, the correct way. But at the same time, I think just globally, parents make decisions about middle school, and they make decisions about high school. So getting, you know, getting them in at either chunk is also a good time to get parents aware that we're, we're here, we have openings and so forth. So, you know, it's a, it's a win-win no matter what we look at.
So I, I would like to just make sure that we articulate where there would be zero openings, cause that has the biggest impact in what happens next.
Right.
So grade four and grade six.
And kindergarten.
Kindergarten, grade four, and grade six.
Oh, and kindergarten.
And you said that right, you said that right now, grade five is huge.
So that would be sixth grade.
That's the grade six.
And that would be grade six. And right now, they have how many per class?
It's 20 or more.
19 or 20. That's one.
Who's the half kid? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you're in one room.
Okay. All right, so no kindergarten, no fourth, no sixth. So then you're saying for first grade, we want how many? Six? Second grade is 18. Jesus, Mary, and Joseph.
Can you republish the sheet to us?
Yes.
Six, zero, 12.
Yeah, just so that we have the update and not looking at the packet.
Six, 12, 20, 26, 18.
Is that you speaking, Danielle?
Yep.
Do you wanna run down the numbers that you're calculating there for?
Well, I just copied them from his thing, so kindergarten would be zero. And then six, 18, six, zero, 12.
I'm not following how you're getting those numbers.
I started, I, I'm copying it off in his thing.
That's the multiply by two.
The last column is multiply by two, correct.
So you're looking to, so you're looking, so you're looking to open 18 spots in grade two?
No.
That would be the most that they could get into.
I mean, I'm not saying.
So that would bring 18 kids per class.
Yeah.
If you stayed at 18 as your.
Target.
Cause you only have 17 now.
It's, yeah, it's very.
So if you gotta open a second classroom, that takes two kids.
Yeah.
Again, I doubt, these are your targets, but I don't think you'd ever get 18 kids.
No, I don't think so either. That's importing a whole class. Right.
Yep.
Right.
Right. And if we went with the target numbers that we did last year, it would actually be 16, not 18? I think. Maybe not.
Okay, so what is important for us to decide? What classrooms we will open? And do we also have to finalize a number of slots per grade? Or can we just say we will be accepting school choice?
I think tonight, we could just accept, we could do the grades.
And then say we're accepting. The grades. For yes or no, and then we can work on these numbers later, right?
Or we can say, as presented with these numbers, to hold that amount, and then amend it as we need to. But before we make a motion on these numbers, we have to take a motion that we are participating in school of choice again.
Yes.
I didn't see that on the agenda, so.
It's all wrapped in.
It's all wrapped in one.
And did we wanna have, so this also had the potential of opening 18 spots in grade 12? Did we want to revisit the conversation about bringing in?
Zero.
No, I don't want to. I think we should, I think we should stick with a consistent method for all grades.
Yes, that's what's on there. You know.
Cause again, I think through our prior conversation, I, I don't think 12, students won't change 12.
26.
So I, I just think that's crazy to potentially have 26 slots for 11th grade.
It's a very small class.
I think that grade lost a lot when they hit ninth freshman year.
We've had graduating classes that were 19.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean.
But we also have to think about what is sustainable for our district.
I know, but. I, I think it's gonna be hard to get to these numbers.
Oh, yeah, I don't think we're gonna.
I'm not worried about having the openings. I'm worried about us being able to recruit enough kids to fill those openings. So I'm, I'm less worried. I wish there was room in preschool, but the, really, the only way to do that would be to take another, to shift the number of rooms in one grade so that we'd have three here and one there, or whatever, and that that.
We, we have no rooms available.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you would have to take another grade.
Wait, what, you wanna add three preschools?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I'm sad that there's no room to take any school choice kindergarteners, because it's nice, it's a nice time to come in.
Oh, I hear ya.
And the only way to do that would be to have one classroom at a different grade. And then every time, it's that snake that swallowed something big that's just like, all the way through the system, that just is.
Yeah, that is stinky to not be able to take any kindergarteners.
So we know if we had to, and I know it was a weird year with COVID, did we have to, do we know if we had to turn away any families for pre-K this year with the two classrooms?
We did not.
We did not due to numbers, no. We lost them because we didn't advertise early enough.
We lost them before, because they found somewhere else to go.
Well, then going on what you just said, Kristi, is it worth looking at one of the really small classes where we're looking to essentially bring in an entire new second grade class and look at shifting that teacher over?
Like 26 or 18.
To add.
So Jen, I'm raising it because, yes, but no. I mean, there's, there's pros and cons, so yes, it would be lovely, because it's the time you can probably get, it's easier, I think, to recruit in kindergartners than it is juniors. But if we do that, the ripple effect, long-term, I think is painful.
Right. If we have too big of a class.
Well, because then you have three rooms at one grade and one room at another grade, and, and that just. So, I, I'm not the one who has to deal with that, but I, I'm imagining everyone at that table just goes.
Because right now, we have projected 27 kids. And he leaves a couple of spots in case people move in, so that's why we have no room to bring anybody in.
But we're not going to be pulling in 20, 26, 18.
No, but, but we don't have room to add.
It's a physical room issue at that point.
More than.
The current class, because we don't have an update for teachers on their thoughts about the larger projected class size, but we do have you, and I just don't know, you said the current.
So the 27 number, we're following the 15, if we upped the target size, we could accept a couple of kids.
But do you think that with the current?
In kindergarten.
The current fifth, it's a current fifth grade class that's really big, is that class size, were you hinting at that, that, that class size is difficult to manage for teachers?
20 is a lot of kids, especially in the younger grades. I don't think, I, I mean, fifth grade is unique because it wasn't always that big. We had one year where we got like eight kids that just came in, and it just shot the numbers up really big. I think it was their third grade year, maybe second grade.
And that was hard for teachers to manage, or not, just because.
It's just a, yeah, I mean, for Hatfield, it's a big class, we don't do that. I think they're managing fine. I haven't heard that they're not managing fine. Yeah, I think they're doing fine, just in the younger years. Great discussion. I think that we should vote whether or not to participate in school choice, as we do every single year. And I think that in the interest of opening spaces, we should vote on which grades we will open. We will open. And then, later, we only, we only have to accept one, right? Like if you, if you have, if you open spots and you have applicants, we can continue this discussion at another time, and you only have to accept one. Yes. Right? Because I think we have other discussions to make that also heavily involve the budget regarding how many.
So in regards to that, then, I would say, do you want me to make a motion?
I was ready to do it.
Go ahead, do it, Kristi, do it.
So I would.
First, we have to participate, right?
I would like to move that the Hatfield Public Schools participate in school choice.
Yes.
And that for fiscal year '23, we have openings for first grade, second grade, third grade, fifth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. With specific numbers to be determined later.
Yeah, we can do that before we actually, we'll let the applications come in, and then we can do.
And then we can discuss the exact.
Discuss the.
But we need to get the, we need to open the door.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'm going to second it, and then I want to.
Let's discuss.
Discuss. I would like to open at least one spot in kindergarten, just to see what we get. Because if we're going to do with the target size 18, we have room to add at least one or two kids.
Right.
Yes, if we go up 18, you can do four.
So what is the time?
Just see what comes in.
What's the timeline?
Limited us.
I agree. Let's talk about the, the calendar timeline for the deadline for applications.
Will be April 15.
Okay, and the point at which we make announcements back out, what's our target for when we tell families yes or no?
Well, if we, our scheduled meet is in.
In May.
Well, the first meeting in April will be in.
The applications won't be closed yet?
Obviously, well, they should.
By April? No, uh, nope, we meet the 13th, right? So we don't, the 13th.
Meet on 13th, so.
And application deadline is the 15th.
So we can vote the numbers.
So we can vote on numbers the next meeting, because it won't officially be dead, a deadline.
So.
Okay.
Except, we want to let people know as soon as possible, because if they have to wait until our May meeting to find out if there were enough openings, they're going to pick another school.
Right, so then we and state are second meeting on the 18th, or 25th, or whatever.
We're talking about two.
Two different things.
Two different things.
If we do the 13th, and do the meeting, and, and choose the numbers, that'll, based on the applications, it'll decide if we need a lottery or not.
Right.
And then if we need a lottery, we'll, we, I already have a date set for, for the lottery, but we'd have the lottery. So for the classes that we don't need a lottery, we'll send them on the 16th, you know, notification.
Right, so what would be the lottery date if needed?
I think we chose, I gotta look at a different calendar.
I'm confused why there's a lottery if.
If you have.
No, I understand the, the thing of the lottery, but if we're saying that we're not going to place what number openings we have.
At this meeting. We're saying we would do that at the next meeting, which happens on the 13th.
We'll say, so far, we have this many applications, how many spots do we want to open up? I mean, 10 people could apply on the 14th, but. And then would be able to.
So in the rare instance that in two days, we get.
Crazy. Right, but otherwise, you know, we can decide on the specific numbers then, and if we say.
Or we close the, the deadline for the 13th, so that he has the numbers when he comes on the 13th. It's only two days.
Yeah, we can do that too.
You know, and then we don't have to come back in May and.
I mean, they could technically send it in at 8 o'clock at night, right?
Well, no, it's usually closed, closed.
If we're being suplexed.
We might still, we might still be here.
I'm not sure what that solves for us.
Because if, if the deadline is 5:00 PM on April 13th, which is the day of our meeting, and we meet at 7 o'clock, when he comes at 7 o'clock, this is how many are here, and they didn't make the deadline if it comes in after 5 o'clock.
Do we have to have a number, though, before it closes?
No.
We don't have to, and you know, we have, we have come back on this topic before and opened additional slots mid-year. Like, I mean, if we did have 10 people, like, we, I mean, we can adjust these things.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We could do it on the, we could have the deadline on 13th, it hasn't been published yet.
Do we know how quickly we are able to, and looking to advertise this?
It launched, the, the website launches the 15th.
Of March.
Talk about. So it's a month. Janet Casey was helping with.
It's a month. So you have that out there for a month. And to, to be really honest, guys, we need to do part of that too. So, once it goes on social, we need to, as individuals, be responding and engaging with that social media so that it can get traction.
I've given up social media.
We can talk about.
Easter. Just kidding.
Except for this, Danielle. So, there's that.
Okay.
I, I guess, to me, it doesn't matter whether we pick the numbers on the 13th and we already know all the applicants, or they come on on the 15th. That to me is sort of.
Right, if we open it, we have to at least accept one, essentially, at the end of the day. So I would like to amend your motion that we accept kindergarten as well, and no fourth and sixth grade.
I, I don't disagree with that. What is the, so kindergartners have a special application, like, there's a turn in your name that you're going to bring your kindergartner date, even if you're local, correct?
I'm not familiar with that.
I mean, they send you a letter.
They send you a letter, and you sort of like, hey, yeah, I'm going to show up for kindergarten.
That's not until the summer.
That's what I'm looking for the date for that, though.
It was like in August.
Well, but at the end of the day, nobody, if you don't send it in.
I know.
Right.
But there is a point at which we ask the public to say, yes, I'm coming to kindergarten at Hatfield. What is the timeline for that?
We ask that of all of them. Everybody has to accept the seat that we've given them.
I'm talking about town.
Residents.
Residents.
Town people, who maybe didn't go to preschool.
You really don't know for sure until they walk in the door on the first day of school.
You can say, and then you can still do whatever you want.
Yeah, we'll have kindergarten registration this spring.
Okay, so the timeline, I'm just looking for how.
There's people out there we don't know about.
What's the timeline for that versus the timeline for this? Because to Danielle's point, that helps you know how many kindergartners you really have.
They're going to run simultaneously, actually.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to learn.
We're doing preschool, school choice, and kindergarten.
All together.
All together.
Got it, awesome.
That's good to know, because then Danielle, that lets us know.
Yeah.
Really what we're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like, I personally would like to open at least one spot in kindergarten, just to see what's there. So I heard a motion amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I apologize for the confusion.
No, it's fine.
No, it's not, it's kind of a power of our life.
It's not working out really well. We're all okay. So, do committee members have anything else that they need to bring forward for future attention? Or anything immediate now? No? Okay, in which case, I am going to make a motion that the school committee move to a brief executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I declare, and we will not return to public session. I second. We'll take a roll call vote. Jen?
Maloney, aye.
Stanishevsky, aye.
Bench, aye.
Futro, aye.
Engelhardt, aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Yeah.